Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Borough of Beach Haven Council. It is Tuesday, October 11th at 6:00 P. M. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First, so into the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act adequate an electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by posting bulletin board in the Beach Haven Municipal Building on the Borough website and mailing the same to the Beach Haven Times, the Ave. Park Press, and the Press of Atlantic City. Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Here.
Dr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Here.
Mayor Lambert? Here.
Cash receipts in the current fund account for the period of September 1st through September 30th, 2022 were $2,453,027.93. Cash disbursements in the current fund account for the month of September totaled $985,556.35. And the cash balance in the current fund account as of this period totaled $16,415,393.37. Cash receipts in the water utility account for the period of September 1st through September 30th, 2022 were $52,307.4. Cash disbursements in the water utility account for the month of September totaled $16,783.60. Cash balance in the water utility account as of September 30th, 2022 was $4,325,21.50. I have minutes for approval this evening, the September 12th regular meeting without formal reading.
Does everybody have a chance to review the minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ordinance 2022-19C and ordinance to require Knox boxes at new commercial buildings existing commercial buildings with improvements requiring land use board approval, existing commercial buildings and certain multifamily residential buildings, final reading.
Since this is the final reading, it is open to the public. We always start with the room first. Please ID yourself, three minutes max, you can hold yourself to that, and please come up and speak into the microphone. Is there anybody in the room who would like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom?
Yeah, I'd like to talk, J.B. Maskell.
You state your address for the record.
316 Fairview Avenue, Beach Haven.
Go ahead.
You know, I just have, I have a problem with it with, you know, with all our little stores. For the, for the most part, that, you know, anybody walking up can look in a window and see if anything's happening. So I don't think there's any real need to have a key for something like that. And we're actually going to be switching over to, you know, all electric locks. So it'll be a keypad, so there would be no reason to have a key. But the, you know, certainly we could do, the fire department could have a master code, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't need a box on the side of the wall.
J.B., I just recommend that you talk with the Chief Elender and come to an agreement what he'd like you to have, and I think that you can come to some agreement that would suffice.
Okay. We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Seeing none.
All right, seeing none, we'll close the floor to public comment. And is there a motion to approve 2022-19C?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-20C and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 199, Vehicles and Traffic, Part IV, Electric Vehicles, subsections 55, Designation of Spaces in the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, final reading.
Again, this one is a final reading, so it's open to public comment. If anybody in the room would like to speak to this? Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom?
Seeing none.
Seeing none, close the floor to public comment. And is there a motion to approve 2022-20C?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Just so everyone was reminded, there on the Amber Street, veterans are parking in the parking lot adjacent to this. Two stations with two ports each.
Right.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-21C and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 173, Solid Waste, Article IV, Private Carters, in the Borough Code, Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, to regulate and prohibit solid waste collection, private haulers before 6:00 A. M., first reading.
As this is the first reading, there is no public comment. Council, would anybody like to discuss this? I basically, this came off of a situation where private haulers were coming very early in the morning, disturbing the citizenry, and the request was made.
Yeah, and then the code did already have the prohibition of picking up before that time, but apparently there've been some overturned cases in the state, so we're just tightening up the regulation per these cases to try to combat that.
Anybody on the council want to speak to?
Too good of you. Be beneficial to people at any time of the year, just the awareness, it's also 6:00 A. M. at night. So after 6:00 A. M., 6:00 P. M. I'm not talking. Sorry. So are we reaching out to the business owners to make them aware of this ordinance? They are aware, this is the existing times, the times are not changing. We're just using language that has come out of these other court cases. It says, you know, peeing in the water, sleeping, like all these buzzwords that have been reasons why these summonses have been defeated.
Okay. There's no further comment? Is there a motion to approve 2022-21C?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-22, Bond Ordinance, authorizing various capital improvements and acquisitions in and for the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,449,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,079,000 bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof, first reading. Do you want me to go through a list?
Yes, please, that'd be helpful.
The list of appropriations included in this general capital, bond capital ordinance is the NJDOT Road Improvement Project for Station Plaza and Sixth Street, that's $400,000. And we are anticipating a grant for that project, the amount of $315,000. Acquisition of lifeguard equipment for use of the beaches throughout the borough, $10,000. Replace or repair bulkheads throughout the borough, Pelham Avenue is our main focus for that, $150,000. Acquisition of a trash truck for use of the public works, actually that needs to come off because we've already proved that in previous ordinance. Acquisition of a pickup truck for use of the Department of Public Works, $35,000. Acquisition of a truck, SUV, or other vehicle for use of the police department, $75,000. Acquisition and installation or replacement of tide valves, $20,000. Acquisition or installation of equipment and other improvements such as lighting and fencing upgrades to parks throughout the borough, $60,000. Replace of, replacement of piping and other refurbishment of fuel tanks located at the borough facilities, $75,000. Upgrades, replacement of various traffic signals throughout the borough, including those located at Sixth and Third Streets, $84,000. And the resurfacing and re-sgraping of the parking lot located at Taylor Avenue, creation of additional parking areas, and improvements to existing parking areas along Delaware Avenue, $190,000.
Thank you. All right. Council, anybody like to comment? No? No, it's kind of a lot of necessities there. Since it is a first reading, it is not open to public comment. Is there a motion to approve 2022-22?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-23, The Bond Ordinance, authorizing various water system improvements by the water utility in and for the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appropriating $270,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $270,000 bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof, first reading.
Good.
Water utility capital improvements include $35,000 for road trench repairs throughout the borough, $200,000 for repair and resurfacing of the existing water reservoir, and $35,000 for acquisition of a pickup truck for the water, the water utility.
Okay. Any comments among the council? No? And first reading, so not open to public comment. Again, obviously things we need. Is there a motion to approve 2022-23?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-24, Bond Ordinance, amending bond ordinance number 202001 of the Borough of Beach Haven and County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, finally adopted on February 18th, 2020, to amend the purposes for which such bond ordinance was finally adopted. The amendment shall then read, "Bond Ordinance, authorizing the construction of a state park and recreation area by and for the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appropriating $325,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $309,000 bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof, first reading."
First reading. I know that people may want to speak to this, but we're going to let Mr. Allen explain, and then we will have a comment for later.
This, even though it reads that way, doesn't mean that this project is going to happen necessarily, it's just we're just building to build and putting things together. This is a bond ordinance that's placed before, that the destruction is canceled now, there's no benefit to pursuing. So it's not necessarily adding any money to this year's capital improvement, it's just repurposing, well, not repurposing, three years old? Two years old?
Three.
2022. So it's not increasing the budget in any particular form, it's just a lateral movement. The reason why I actually wanted to do this was because based on the way everything's going, when the plan comes together, this gives us the ability, it doesn't mean we're doing. There's still a lot of questions that we mentioned before this thing gets, we might in any particular form like this, and that's how it's going to end. But the way that economy is doing at the moment, I expect that the building material can be much more expensive, we have to wait until the system's in what it appears for the next capital improvement. It could be a very similar situation, but we improve the product first of all. To change, very expensive, $600,000.
Yes.
And that would effectively kill the product if that wasn't fixed. So all this is doing is giving us the ability, when the plan is correct, is better completed to move a little faster so that we don't get stuck in a situation where you have a very good, you know, very good, very good situation. That's, it's not, I know you have your side of it, but this doesn't mean it's getting built, this means that if it comes together, we can build, and a quick, an immediate vote serves.
Thank you. Anybody else in council like to speak to this?
I think they explained it very well.
Okay, I'll jump in, and I know Dan has explained it to me, and I've spoken to my co-council, and I still have some reservations about moving forward at this time. I think there's a lot of money going out right now, we saw the laundry list of things that need to be done in the borough, and even though not necessarily spending this, I'm just not comfortable at this point in time, and my choice would be, my preference would be to table it. It's interesting, when I've spoken to my fellow council members, they said they've heard nothing but positive. I've heard a lot of people keep writing to me, calling me, stopping me in the street and saying, hey, you know, what are you doing? And I just, again, want to remind people that you've got to include all of the council when you write. You have to include Sherri Mason. Our council borough management form actually has Sherri making a lot of decisions. We are the administrative arm, and we do the ordinances and that kind of thing, but when you write just to me, you, you're not getting to the people who really need it. I'm one vote, and I've said this many times, but people still continue to say, well, you're the mayor, here's, here's what I think. So I'm going to urge everybody again, so you're hearing the full story, because right now they're like, you know, we're not hearing it, and I'm like, well. So I don't want to be the one person who's always, you know, giving the news. I think it's only fair that everybody gets to hear it from whoever has something to say. As I said, I just think that, you know, right now there are too many unknowns as far as moving forward, I think we have a lot of expenses, so I would prefer to table it. But...
Can I say something? I think, I think there's two issues here. First of all, even if we pass this, it doesn't mean that we're spending money, it just means that we can if something happens. But I think one of the other questions that's come up that, Dan, you might be able to explain, is that, that this is going to be brought about by donations, it's not going to be, it's not going to be us spending the taxpayers' money on this. And I think that the people in the audience and on Zoom should understand this a little bit better and understand that even when it's donations, we still have to guarantee the money, in other words, we still have to put it in our budget, but perhaps you could explain a little bit more about the donations?
Yeah, that was always something that, you know, part of this project was to minimize the burden of the taxpayers through donations. That's still a plan, but it initially was described, and Sherri would be the one that would explain this, but I think I've gotten dressed with it. But anything that we have, we do, whether it be donation or not, we need to appropriate it in our budget, we have to have it available, and then when the donations come in, we can have a separate account whose donations are gathered to apply to, so we don't use, we don't have to bond it, we don't have to take what it's, being funded, and you, you know, fumble in that direction instead of through tax. But it still has to be in the budget legally.
Dan, I mean, do you, have you had anybody come to you and say, I'd like to donate?
Yeah.
Do we have a number about what we're looking for donations?
I've heard from a number of people that we could probably take a fumble project. I hope that's the case. I know councilman Rutherford and I had a conversation that we would feel the only way to be appropriate to do this is if we got 50% of the better to fumble it, preferably better. So, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, I've been sure, you know, there's a lot of money in the community, there's people in town, you know, that ask me when to do it and how to do it. If you need to donate already, we can send a check to the borough and very good with it, and then also state part donation. I think personally, it's a pretty sure, we still have some of the questions to be answered, but it's entirely possible. So even though we are appropriating, not appropriating, re-appuraging all ordinance, it doesn't mean that we can spend any of it necessarily. So the cost is kind of a funny thing, if I'm a private sector, if I'm a business person, if I budget or something, I already know this one cost, I already know how I'm going to pay it. But in this case, there's a lot of different variables, municipal budget is very much different, and we're still learning every time we speak to the check.
One more thing, I think, is the thing for people to know, sometimes when you budget something like this, and it's in, it's, it's in your budget, which is important, and let's say it sits there for a long time, I mean, we never touch it, I mean, you can find money, and we've done this in the past, that's been allocated maybe 10 years ago, and nobody's ever touched it, but we needed something desperate to be done somewhere else, and if it was something connected with that, we could actually then get that money and utilize it instead of, I mean, it's very, but we just can't, all of a sudden, we, if something really goes wrong and we really need money, we just can't have to, all of a sudden, say we're dedicating that money. So for example, let's say you have something really go wrong in, by veterans, by sending a park, and you needed to fix it, you might be able to say, I can take $50,000 to fix this because it's in there based on this. And it, it sounds kind of crazy, but it, many times that I've been doing this for 12 years, and many, many times I've seen where we really needed to do something desperately, and there wasn't the time to, to, you know, get it in a budget, to do it in a timely fashion, but by having money allocated somewhere else, just, you know, saying you have it sitting there, it gave us the means to be able to move forward with something that was possibly very difficult to do. So, I mean, that, that's one of the reasons why, I, I mean, I have a lot of reservations myself about this particular ordinance, and I'm concerned about where it's going to be, and, you know, concerned about the coverage of a lot of, you know, land that I don't want to see a lot of land that's presently previous covered, basically, so, and I think a lot of people have the same concerns, but I, I know we're not going to do it unless we can come up with the right solution, so I would be in favor of voting to allocate this money.
Okay, anybody else? No? All right, is there a motion to approve 2022-24?
So moved. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Based on a lot of variables I'm still not sure about, I'm just going to have to say no at this point.
Correct. Ordinance 2022-25, Bond Ordinance, authorizing renovations and improvements to the emergency operations center by and for the Borough of Beach Haven, in the County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appropriating $3 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,855,000 bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof, first reading.
As it is the first reading, there's no public comment, and anybody on the board like to comment on this one?
Yeah, I would. We did talk about this quite a bit at our last meeting, for those of you that were there. A general feeling in, in the audience amongst the people that were there was that this is a good idea. I think it's a good idea, we have a very valuable piece of property, and we need to, we need to, to improve, it needs improvements, we do not want to give this back to the government, technically we own this, and basically, there's a lot of uses, and there's also some great possibilities of maybe getting some grant money to cover a lot of these expenses, so I think it's really important that we do this.
Anybody else?
I also think, I think this would be an opportunity to serve the volunteer and the people who live here in town that support the town through EMS, through first aid, through what's it, police and fire department, as well as anybody else, our emergency management. I have toward that property, it is arid, so I'd love to see it improved. I understand this is a huge undertaking, but I'm convinced it would be a great thing to do to town, to do it best for long term, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Well, yeah, pretty much we spoke about this last time, and I don't think there's a lot of new ground to cover, as my fellow members have just said. Dan, it's interesting, because to your point, when I first heard about this project, it was like $2 million, and then in a year and a half now, it is up over $3. So it's not getting any cheaper, I think we need to jump on this one. So, is there a motion to approve 2022-25?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-26, Bond Ordinance, authorizing various borough-wide water main system improvements, Phase II, by the water utility in and for the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appropriating $2,400,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,400,000 bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof, first reading.
First reading again, so no public comment. Again, pretty self-explanatory. Anybody in the council want to speak to this one?
Phase II project.
Right, right. Okay, if there are no more comments from the council, is there a motion to approve 2022-26?
So moved. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
All matters listed under item consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Municipal Council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability funds, and any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately. All consent agenda items will be reflected in pools in the minutes. Resolution 203, approving the 2022 addendum to the multi-jurisdictional program for public information, part of the National Flood Insurance, the National Flood Insurance Community Rating System. Resolution 204, acknowledging the hiring of a full-time laborer to the Beach Haven Water Resolution 205, authorizing execution of an agreement between the County of Ocean and Borough of Beach Haven for the 2022 CDVG Community Development Block Grant Project, handicap accessibility improvements, various locations. 206 is returning dumpster bonds, 207 returning car cons. 208 is authorizing to advertise for bids for the 2021 New Jersey DOT Road Construction Project, Pennsylvania and Pelham Avenues. 209, authorizing to advertise for bids for the 2022 Phase I Water Main Replacement Project. Resolution 210, re-adopting the flood plain management plan and amendments as per the annual review. 211, acknowledging mayoral appointments to the library board of trustees, and I added to 12, amending the sidewalk sale dates, there were two dates allocated for October 1st and 2nd, since the charter test has been rescheduled, we're going to move those dates through the charter, the charter states, the 15th through the 16th.
Everybody get a chance to review, is there anything you'd like to discuss or move for now? No? Is there a motion to approve the resolutions?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
I have a bill list this evening in the amount of $3,351,783.10.
Everybody get a chance to review the bills? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
This is an empty bill list since our last meeting got canceled.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
We have two items for general discussion, the first is a proposed ordinance regulating the sale of unregulated substances such as kratom and Delta H THC. Jamie, would you want to discuss that?
Sure. I don't know if anyone's familiar with what Delta H is.
As close as you can, okay?
Sorry, Delta H is, or what kratom is, they're derivatives of two different types of plants, and have been recently, more or less been advertised to put into candy products, like, for example, instead of nerds, they're meds, they're in gummies, and they're really advertised towards children, and... And if you go to the FDA's page, they're unregulated substances. There's tons of information and evidence that, you know, children are getting a hold of these products, they're ingesting those products, and become sick from these products. And again, with no real evidence from the FDA on what exactly the overall effects in the future will be on the children, I think it's necessary that we have some type of ordinance to put a little, put some regulations on these products. So, in the state of New Jersey, there are no regulations on these products, and I'm proposing in this ordinance that they're not to be sold to anyone under the age of 21, that they have to be sold in a storefront, and that they're not able to be sold within 1,000 feet of the school zone. They're the three things that I'm proposing in this ordinance that we've been working on. And again, I've seen these products, and my overall concern is that children are getting a hold of these products, and they're being advertised towards children. So that's what I am suggesting in this ordinance, those three things.
Thank you, and I should mention too, and I don't know if I probably should, but we did get a letter suggesting from a very concerned group in town about a place that was selling this, and that's when we discovered that, you know, it really isn't very carefully regulated by the state, and they asked us to also step in and see if we could do something to control the situation. Anybody else?
I don't really know much about it, so, I mean, it sounds like a good idea. Shouldn't this perhaps be brought to the state and become part of the state?
The state, so a lot of the, some of these products, it's legal to sell products that have less than 0.3% of THC in the product, and the state is okay with that. And there's no, it's interesting, because you can't buy a pack of cigarettes, but you can buy these products at any age. The state has not regulated this, as of yet, it's, you know, these things come out, and it takes kind of like a pre-active approach instead of a proactive approach, and we're trying to be a little bit more proactive, since we are, you know, again, that balance between tourism and, you have a lot of children coming in, not our own children, in summertime, and, you know, people are trying to sell this. That's who their marketing are, not our adolescents. I don't think more purchase saying parents, or nets, right?
And just to be clear, it is within 1,000 feet of any school, playground, park, or daycare facility. Not just the Bechavon school, there are other facilities that you would be, would fly.
Like I said, we did, we see the letter from the Board of Education, and there are other concerned parents that have approached me as well and asked about this, and I looked into it, and I was like, wow, there really is no legislation for this. And a lot of other municipalities are doing the same thing. Jersey City is doing this as well, a lot of shore towns are cooperating as well. Even just by mistake, too, children, just on the FDA's website, which I told Chair to do, on council, it says specifically, you know, what has been happening, the amount of.
Are these products legal, I mean?
Very small, and on the back they're legal, but if you were to look at them, you would have no idea that they were a possible, like, usage. And unfortunately, a lot of these products were used for good, but now.
But not for kids.
Not for kids, and now the marketing is taking over, and that's their audience, and that's not okay.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, I think, move forward.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think, you know, I know where this is kind of coming from, and having it behind a, you know, in its forefront, behind a counter versus the open to a couple of people just walking by, is definitely something that, you know, more regulated and a safety aspect. You know, obviously, I mean, no, I deal with children in the school, so, you know, these could be happening to children, getting a hold of it, and, you know, having to deal with that, trying to figure out why these kids get sick.
We wanted to move on general discussion, rather than doing your first readings. Right, well, any, you know, businesses that do sell maybe some products that had concerns or questions about something like this, this is, this ordinance is specifically for these types of substances, and the marketing towards under the age of 21, and having these at outdoor vendors.
Truthfully, when somebody told me what was going on, I had no idea. I just assumed that anything with the THC was illegal. So, it was a bit of an education, and, yeah, I think it's necessary.
Okay.
Do we want to open this at this point, or wait for public comment, or?
Wait.
Okay.
One more item.
Okay.
The next item is a proposed ordinance opting into a civil service commission examination exemption. I just gave you each a copy of the draft ordinance, and the chief is here to discuss it. It's, would essentially add one line to our existing ordinance to allow that class two officers may be hired and appointed directly, and exempted from the examination requirement for an entry-level law enforcement position. And then it cites the public law that enacted it in 2021. We're grateful that they made these changes. We are a civil service town, and we're bound by the civil service hiring requirements. We have, you know, certified lists with folks that are on, take the exam. So, and I know the chief has a need, he wanted to talk to council.
So, given that we're civil service, we're always waiting on the civil service list to come out, and that's a problem. It gives us a wider pool of applicants with how real estate is right now in town. We have, we have people who want to come work for us, but they don't live here, they don't, they don't have residence in town, so they're not even able to take the civil service test. So it'll open up a wider pool. Oftentimes, our civil service test will come out, and we'll have one or two people on the test, and that's who we get to choose from. You have one or two people to choose from, so it'll open that up. And then, using these people as class twos for a year, checking out how they're working, making sure they're an actual, a good fit for our town, make sure they're, you know, they're a good fit with our kids at the school, you, we get the type of employee that we want. And that's what I'm looking to do. I don't want to just hire, you know, the only person that was available. I want to be able to pick the person that's right for us. So, I hope you guys consider this, and.
So is this something where, sorry, so you would hire from, like, your class one officers?
Class twos, they have to be a class two officer, they have to have gone through the police academy already.
Okay.
But if they're working for us as a class two officer, we can, we can hire them directly from that and not wait for a civil services, not right now.
So what, yeah, what happens?
Right now, we're waiting for the list to come out for civil service. We've been waiting for.
So we can't hire?
A year.
We can't?
Yeah, right now, I don't have anybody. Yeah, there's nothing I can do right now. Yeah, we're just waiting, we're waiting for that, the regular list, and we're waiting for the circus list to come out. They're just.
So those would be people that you haven't even.
Yeah, and we wouldn't know who they are. You know, they could be anybody.
The only other option we have, and we've used a few times in the past as an intergovernmental transfer, we did get an officer from Stockton.
We got somebody from the Sheriff's Department also.
Yeah, so, but when I spoke to the chief today, we had discussions months ago about wanting to get to a 15-man roster, and at this point, he's operating with 12. So he would actually, would like to have the council consider having first reading on this ordinance tonight, if you would.
Again, this doesn't mean that we're hiring anybody tonight, it just, it gives us the opportunity to broaden our, our look at who we're going to hire, and make sure it's the person that we want.
I had the opportunity to speak with the chief today, and we kind of went over this, and, yeah, I think it's a good thing, I think our department needs a little bolstering, since we are down three, and I have no problem approving this.
I think that's why civil service did it.
And it's really frustrating when you have a good guy and you can't keep him. You really want to, and then, or girl, they go, they go. This is ordinance 2022-28C, an ordinance amending chapter 30, police department opting into the examination exemption provided by the civil service commission hiring procedures for class two officers, first reading.
Okay, since it's first reading, for all of us, there will be no public comment. And did anybody else have anything to add here?
Yeah.
No, it's pretty cut and dry, I think. Okay, is there a motion to approve 2022-28C?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
That's all I have to say.
Okay, so now we're to the public comment portion of our meeting. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Try to hold up to three minutes, don't forget to identify yourself, name, and address. Starting with the room first, Tom?
Tom Kelly, 133 Fifth Street, here in Beach Haven. I'm going to speak in reference to the kratom and the Delta THC. I'm a licensed pharmacist in New Jersey, license number 00RI1600 for 42 years. There may be a place clinically for kratom, I'm not so sure about Delta THC. I don't think there's been enough research in regards to that, but it's totally unregulated, and it's like the Wild West. So risk of contamination or substitution of other, other illegal substances into that chain is, is very high. So placing our community at risk for an unlicensed, unregulated sales, certainly not regulated by the Board of Pharmacy, is a pretty sketchy deal. Even within a regulated market, there's risk of counterfeit elements being entered into the distribution stream. As standard THC, there are risks associated, there's no documented overdoses, but there is higher risk of schizophrenia, and also higher risks of cognitive impairment in young people. So, these are not benign products. So, in reference to the ordinance, I'm opposed to any sales, but if there are going to be sales, at the very least, whoever is going to be selling this, perhaps in a storefront, should also show proof of insurance to sell these specific products. Now, if they can find an insurance carrier that's going to insure them in this regard, God bless them. If they're going to sign off on it, and they're going to assume the liability, that takes a little bit of the burden off, but I still don't support the sales of these products for our community.
I don't know.
Yeah, can we legally?
Yeah, I don't know if we can legally just ban that product.
I, I understand, I understand that.
But that's interesting to prove the insurance for these specific products, so thank you for that. That's something.
Yeah, I said, Bruce can look at that.
Okay, if anyone asks any questions, I'll be happy to field any answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to speak on any topic? Tom?
Don Cax is 16 Fifth Street, Beach Haven. Over four years ago, Frank Little provided a study that basically said that our storm drains were collapsed in an opera wall. As we move forward to this winter, we're probably seeing people putting, you know, sandbags in front of their businesses, and continue to have flooding on, on their homes on the west side of the bay. And I'm just wondering, when we did, you know, he talked a lot about, years ago, over four years ago, we passed a $3 million bond ordinance to provide $3 million for new storm drains, and of which 50% was going to be by the state, 25% by the county, and 25% by Beach Haven. So for $750,000, we would have had storm drains, we would have had backflow preventers, and we would have had pumping stations. I was told that that work is going to begin this fall. Is that the status, and will that happen this year?
It's supposed to be ready by spring, right?
We were ready to go out to bid for the project now. Originally, the first half of the project was supposed to be funded by the Barnet-Gibb partnership, and they failed out. So the split is going to be between the Borough of Bechavon and the County of Ocean. So it'll be 1.5 for each.
Okay, but it's going to happen, because again, I mean, I remember sunny days, or in Chatterfest, and Chatterfest is coming around, and people walking in the streets because they can't get, you know, creating unsafe conditions. So I was just glad to hear that your ask was finally going to happen after over four years.
Well, it was basically COVID supply chain issues, it wasn't.
Still being put through the CAPRA permitting wringer to today.
So, so we're thinking it'll be done by next summer?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the room? Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom?
Jim Lambert?
Hi, everybody, Jim Lambert here.
State your address for the record.
516 North Atlantic Avenue, Beach Haven.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, I'm not real crazy about using taxpayer money for a skate park. When I was in high school back in the 70s, there were one opened, and, and the lawsuits, the injury lawsuits piled up almost immediately, and that skate park closed within a year. So I only hope that whoever's advocating that skate park now is talking to some insurance underwriters to make sure we're not biting off a huge liability problem if, in fact, that skate park gets built. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom which could be heard for a public comment?
Yeah.
Raise an electronic hand.
Hey, one second. Oh, no, Brian?
Regarding the skateboard.
Your name and address.
Oh, yes, Ryan Rogers, 116 Delaware. Has there any thought been given to forming a separate entity for donations for the skateboard? Like a 501(c)(3) for profit? I don't, it may remove a lot of the conferences and headaches of everybody. Just might make it simple.
I think, yeah.
We're working with some part of the community that are actually ready to do so, but again, as we just mentioned, this hundred and five, they're ready to put a capital through, cool enough to even build this thing. So everything's kind of on hold, this water design, so some funders, and the state, that.
I'm hearing from my youth, heard from people, talking to you, whether there are enough donations to meet the need to build.
We do substantially, we have a whole, a lot of it, yeah.
Good, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else, anywhere? No? I see none, we will close the public comment portion and go to final remarks by council. Mrs. Rutherford, how about if we start with you tonight?
So, thank you for coming tonight. I am glad we can support the police department in hiring some class two officers for moving forward. So, I am glad that we can move that forward. I really don't have other things to say.
Thank you, Dr. Davis?
I don't have a lot to say, but I think the Public Works Department has a lot to do to repair the beach. I walked down the beach a couple times, and most of, many of the street ends are totally along the beach in places. And I just want to say that I think we were very smart, and we talked a lot about buying equipment for Public Works to be able to deal with these situations, and we had a lot of sort of agonizing discussions, but we decided to go through with it, which I think is going to be good for Public Works. And I, I know they're going to be extremely busy now, and I just want to say thank you to Chris and his team, because I think he does an amazing job keeping this town in good shape.
Thank you. Spencer?
Also, looking forward to these projects moving forward, especially old projects that now can start to begin, like the, our stormwater management project and pumping stations, everything was on hold for like two years, with Bechavon County. It's impossible to get anything started or completed, so I'm looking forward to that as well. This is a big time for fall festivals, and I feel like there's a festival for something that there is. Last weekend, there was the fact there, there was a really good thing, the celebration. celebration at the township building, which I wanted them to come here, it's like all these, uh, oyster farmers there, and you can test all the oysters, I thought it'd be pretty cool, so I'm driving down. Um, Chowder Fest is this weekend, and then we can look forward to maybe some evening lights next week, and just on another, another festival I'm really, and I just want to, also, unfortunately, the fire department had to cancel one of their biggest fundraisers, but a, a business did come up, and these burners who donated their night's revenue to the fire company, so thank you for them, because it's important to take care of our, our volunteers. Other than that, I'm going to stop in practice with no blinking lights.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
Yeah, I was also going to mention, uh, the weather we had with the original Chowder Fest, we've been unfortunately eliminated, you know, the block for the fire department. They get the, 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 you know, when they get the, well, that's the patients keep in mind, they didn't get a big portion of the revenue that they need to operate this fall. Uh, I think that our beaches are definitely there, and Chris has a lot of work to do. Um, I was out this afternoon, I'm a boat, one of them, I found this island wide, that's not just off from, uh, U D one, I suppose. I knew that he, I knew that he talked about it, next year it's a little too long again, if I heard correctly, twenty twenty-three. Um, and I still want to talk, this is, I think, a great idea, so I may be cheaper. Right now, I'm going back to, yeah.
Yeah?
So, yeah, very happy, I can maybe talk to the staff, there's some John, yeah, and that off of it.
Thank you. Um, as I usually, everybody couldn't beat me through it, but that's okay. Um, I do want to thank the Public Works Department, Emergency Management, our Police Department, Fire, First Aid, they did a wonderful job through five days of really intense weather. Um, we have gotten a list of the beach, um, erosion and all the damage that was done, and it is formidable, and it's already being, uh, submitted. Hopefully, we will be getting money back in that regard. Um, at the last meeting, which was, um, canceled, I want to thank Bonnie Wells and the Coastal Living Real Estate, uh, team for the donation of the Gator, the beach taxi this summer. It was a huge success. We got just all positive comments, it was very, very well received. Um, the drivers, Sean Nolan and Braden Shin, and occasionally Pat O'Donnell filling in, uh, also got rave reviews. I just wanted to publicly thank them as well, and again, enjoy Chowder Fest weekend and everything it brings, and especially on Monday, those blinking lights. So thank you very much. Without any further ado, I think we'll be adjourned. Motion? Yep, okay.
I can have you adjourned.
Second.